We're going to move to back to business and we're going to discuss, I guess we don't need to vote on the approval of the district technology plan. So with that, we've turned over to you.
So since nothing happens after 9:30, I'm going with that clock.
Got a little time.
Okay, so I have a little bit of time. Thanks for allowing me to come and talk about the technology plan. This is going to be sort of a quick overview of the tech plan and then I'm going to talk a little bit about the STEAM initiative that we have with the foundation. So as you're looking through the plan, you've all got a copy of it. Here's the, you'll find the executive summary and the five fundamental areas of the technology plan for professional development, infrastructure, evaluation, and funding. Our vision for technology here at Byram Hills, this was created, just needed a little background. The BTC with input from the facilitators helped to sort of craft this overall plan. It was sort of a revision, but a dramatic revision of the previous plan since we've had so much change in the district since the previous plan was created.
Andrew, if I can add, the BTCs are the technology teachers in each building on your board.
So there was a broad representative of each of the buildings included in the creation of this. So fundamentally, what we look at in technology is what we call the five Cs of 21st century learning, which really look at communications, collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, and community, which you heard a lot of tonight when we're talking here. These are the skills that, when they look at the research in 21st century skills, these are the skills that come out by industry, by colleges and community groups that have come together to really look at what we need to focus on. So our belief really is that technology coupled with good instruction can really maximize the capacity for all learners, and all learners is the really key component there. We really focus on how can we use technology to sort of lift all boats in the system and really impact all the learners that we have available. And ultimately, it's technology in doing that can really help with the district's goal of building leaders of tomorrow. So we have five focus areas here that we look at, and the first one is looking at the use of technology in the district. Again, this is kind of a reiteration of the five Cs. So how can we use technology to enhance communications, critical thinking, collaboration, creativity, and community? That's our real number one focus area for last year and this year. If you were to look at our summer offerings in professional development, you would have seen this theme. This is really where we've been focused on our professional development and our work with teachers and in the technology choices that we make. Two is looking at access to appropriate technologies. We've talked a lot about the Chromebook Initiative and where that's gone and three through eight one-to-one and the expansion at K-2 and the expansion at the high school. But really, our focus in technology is looking at all the different tools that are out there and which tools are needed for the most appropriate technology for the most appropriate needs. One of the areas we've been focusing on last year was looking at software and looking at, are we purchasing the appropriate resources for the schools and the students and are they being utilized to the best benefit they can give our district? But we do have targeted uses of tablets and Mac devices and other devices as it's really needed for that curriculum. Area three is looking at STEAM, which I'm not going to talk a lot about, but this is really looking at the engineering design thinking principles, coding robotics, which we talked about earlier, and how we're restructuring the middle school curriculum and media and digital literacy as well. And our last focus area is looking at modernizing the learning environment. This is something that we started focusing on at the end of last year where we're looking at, how can we, because of the Chromebook Initiative, some of the lab spaces have become not used as much as they had in the past. So we're looking at, how can we reuse that space in a more modern way and how can we create a real modern 21st century classroom and then pilot those types of tools in the core classes as well? I think you're going to be hearing more about that over the course of the next year as we really sort of make that concept concrete and look for some grant funding and other sources to sort of support that initiative. And all this leads to our three financial focus areas, which is number one, continuing with the mobile devices and making sure that we create a strong, if we're going through this three-through-eight, one-to-one initiative, we really need to make sure that we have a replenishment plan in place so that as these age out, we're getting new ones into the system. And if we need to buy more as the district expands, there's been some talk of more in the high school possibility down the road. So really looking at that and focusing on making sure that we have this plan for replacing mobile devices and also desktops as well. There are a need for some desktops in our schools. We can't get completely away from them, so we do have to look at replacing them as well. And finance area number two is looking at our network. So we have got a robust wireless network. We've increased to 300 megs to the Internet this year, which is double what we had at the end of last year. We have 10 gigs going between all of our buildings, a gig to the rig. We can up the wireless network as much as we need to as demand increases. But we are doing some studies right now to see if, make sure that we have some saturation in all the classrooms, that there are some sort of dead spots that we need to look at as we start to use the devices more and just solve those little problems as they come about. And there's a couple of those that we've identified and are going to work on this year. And then probably the biggest number one area that we're going to focus on is, as a next big technology initiative, is really going to be the interactive whiteboards. All of our smart boards in the district were purchased about 10 years ago, and they were mostly all purchased at the same time, which means that the projectors and the smart boards that are in the classrooms are aging out. That's past end of life on most of them, even though a lot of them are still working well. We're seeing little failures here and there that we need to address that. We know that soon that's going to be an issue where we're going to see more major failures on those devices. So looking at the finances of the district in the coming future, one of the areas we're focusing on is using our smart bond money to replace those devices with a more modern interactive presentation station. That might, may or may not be a smart board. It may be an interactive TV that is a touchscreen LED TV, which you can get a much higher resolution, a better picture, less fade on the sides, and it'll last longer. A TV lasts about eight to 10 years on a standard LED is the expected lifespan. Three to five is actually lifespan on many of the projectors because of the number of hours we put on them. So we're going to be piloting this year some alternative to see what might make the best sense for the district and bringing four or five different vendors in to see where we want to go with that resources. That's the tech plan quickly. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. How do we avoid the same problem that you just described with the whiteboards if we take a look and we decide what's the next greatest thing and we put it in all the classrooms? Is there a way to equip some rooms with some of these things and sort of wait and then equip more rooms? So, you know, it really is more, I think, representative of, you know, the evolution that we see in technology because you know, as soon as we put the same thing in all of the classrooms, it's going to be obsolete all at the same time, and we're going to have a huge expenditure or problem again.
Sure. So there are definitely some of the tools that we have that we're making this sort of three-year replenishment plan for, the Chromebooks being one of them. That's a big expenditure and we need to make sure that every three years we can bring new Chromebooks into the system and we can replenish Chromebooks at a rate that makes sense. Chromebook lifespan is three to five years depending on the Chromebooks there. But the smart boards and these interactive TVs have a much longer lifespan. We can phase them in, but one of the things we're looking to do is utilize a large amount of money that the district is getting, $333,000 specifically for these types of tools and interactive presentations and whiteboards is one of the tools that they acknowledge. So we can phase them in and we can definitely do that, although unlike the Chromebooks where you really have a much shorter lifespan, I think that we would be better off, we could plan for this coming down the road and sort of plan for that eight or 10 years out versus something that is much quicker renewal.
What's wrong with Chromebooks? There's no hard drive, so what is it that goes on those that they're on?
They're used every single day. It'll be keys going, screens losing pixels or if you lose a screen on a Chromebook, you replace the Chromebook in some cases if it's because of aging out. If it's because of a break, we can replace it at about, you know, half the cost of what the Chromebook costs to start with. But as you're aging them out, replacing screens on a three or four or five-year-old machine doesn't necessarily make because you could have other mechanical failures that are going to happen soon.
Battery life, is that an issue?
Battery life will degrade over time as well. Right now, we get a great solid seven hours of battery life on these machines so that we don't have any worries getting through the day. There will, in three or four years, you'll start to see Chromebooks not making it through the day on a charge and certain things like that.
It's the wireless technology too, right? I mean, we're, I don't know what we're operating exactly, 4G or whatever the Wi-Fi also connection as those chips change. So the bandwidth, I remember several years ago, we had a bandwidth issue where there was a presentation given where, you know, there was latency issues in lots of, so what's great to hear is the bandwidth right now based on the, you know, the initiatives we've had over the last several years. I know the foundation had ceded some grants on bandwidth, so I think that's great.
Absolutely.
I guess that evolution of Wi-Fi, I mean, five years ago, we didn't really, Wi-Fi wasn't pervasive. I mean, in five years, maybe it's another generation of Wi-Fi. All I'm saying is, you know, at least from my perspective, I mean, three to five years seems like a pretty long life cycle in the world we're living in in technology. It's hard to imagine that, but it's the way it is.
The bandwidth here, you're right, because right now, we're running about eight different wireless protocols in our buildings to accommodate a variety of different wireless devices. So you're right, as new protocols come out, which speed up the ability for the wireless network to work, we need to keep up with those as well, with the devices in the classroom.
When does the state money come in, do we know yet in terms of timing? And then what are the general restrictions around timing of use of funds and what you can use it for?
The first step in getting those funding is the technology plan. So we have to submit the technology plan in the next week or by the 16th of this month. After we submit that, we'll submit a financial plan that outlines those financial areas that we talked about there and one of them that we're going to apply for financial through the funding. The smart bond funds, one building project for pre-K programs, if you're building pre-K programs. It funds wireless Internet access. It funds projectors and devices and presentation systems and then end units in the classroom. So there's some key areas that it's funding. It doesn't fund everything, but, and it doesn't fund any services. It's only the hardware itself.
So you think it's 2016?
They say that if we apply this year, well, their role is a 90-day turnaround on the funds. I don't know if that's possible.
They haven't borrowed any money yet.
They have not borrowed any.
They've not borrowed any money. The state has not borrowed anything to apply for.
Yes, so.
$1 billion.
There's not even a way to apply yet.
We should have ended it ahead of getting it, but.
Right, we're not putting it in, that's why the funding is not going for something we need in the classroom tomorrow.
Yep, got it.
Any other questions?
We need to approve this as a board?
Greg said we do.
No, we don't. That's just information.
This is great. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, thanks.
I have one other area I wanted to talk to a little bit about, and that is the STEAM initiative that we have. So I think.
This money we will get.
This is money we will get, yes. This is a grant that we're funding through the foundation and it's one of their dedicated giving campaigns for the fall, their only dedicated giving campaign for the fall, where we're looking at creating a K-12 scope and sequence for technology and STEAM. So the areas of STEAM that we're focusing in right now are the same areas that we've talked about already, which are coding, robotics, electronics, 3D modeling, and also there's money built into this for professional development. We got together and we started looking at these areas and we looked at what tools are most appropriate at different grade levels and started creating this K-12 sort of roadmap for these tools and where we might integrate them most effectively. That doesn't mean that some of these would be, might be at a different grade levels that aren't noted there, but these are sort of the areas that we thought they'd be most appropriate at. So in coding, there is not a lot included in this grant except for at the higher end because we're already doing a lot of this coding already. But what we are focusing on is the high school end of this, where we're looking at wearable technology. What we're doing right now by pushing coding at the lower levels is we're pushing the high school to sort of up their game a little bit and change their curriculum a little bit. And they're really focusing on, how does technology work as it interfaces with human body? Wearable technologies, technologies that augments with maybe nervous systems, things like that, or things that they're starting to explore. And so there is some resources in here for wearable technology. And then robotics, we're already doing the Lego Mindstorm and that which has become the focus of our middle school curriculum right now, and we're doing some of the facts. But what we're doing is we're creating a couple opportunities to look at robotics K through 12. And you've probably heard about the NOW robot that we had around the district last year and was, so that's in this grant as well, getting two of those that they'll be able to use K through 12. In some cases, it'll be used more as sort of a consumption of information and get them excited about robotics and coding. In other areas, they'll actually be able to go in and code a humanoid device, you know, that can do almost anything that a unit can do as far as picking things up, communicating through video and three cameras in the head, sensors around the body, things like that. And then the OzoBots and some other tools at the other levels, which can easily be integrated into the content areas. This is not things for, we're not looking at pulling people out to do these experiences. We're looking at working with teachers to find ways to integrate these into the classroom. That's our goal. Electronics, this is looking at how does these different types of sensors fit together to create a bigger device? So at the very basic level, it's looking at these big blocks and there's a very limited number of those. So at the very higher level, looking at these little bits, which there's hundreds of sensors in these little bits that where you can create anything that has any type of input device you could think of. And then at the higher level, the Adafruit stuff, which is looking at the technology that is full-fledged computers and creating very complex computer systems that solve real-world tasks. Whatever you want to do, it's very flexible. There's hundreds and hundreds of different computer applications there. That's the electronics scope. And then looking at 3D modeling. 3D modeling has two different sides to it. There's the virtual modeling and then there's the 3D modeling, which you've heard about in the past, which is the 3D printers and the physical modeling. So in that, we're looking at expanding printers to all grade levels, K through 12. So every building would have a 3D printer and expanding into some 3D scanning environment. So we can actually scan things into the 3D printer and then add on to it. And then looking at virtual environments like the cardboard and Oculus Rift, which will allow the students to have a 3D virtual experience and be able to create their own virtual experience. Imagine a high school student, instead of creating a model that's physical of an atom, they're actually creating a three-dimensional model with the things moving inside of it and then they create that and are inside that atom in this virtual environment. And then professional development, looking at a variety of different organizations that we can bring in to partner with to sort of think about how we can really maximize the use of these tools in project-based experiential learning opportunities for the students. And this is our goal. Our goal is to focus on how can we help teachers use the engineering design process in teaching core content areas. And this is kind of important. Do you know what the number one degree that CEOs and Fortune 500 companies have? You would think it's business, but the number one degree Fortune 500 companies have is CEOs is engineering. 24% of all Fortune 500 CEOs have an engineering background. And that's partly, they attribute that to this ability to really look at the parts of large organizations and large systems and break them apart into small pieces and And ultimately, this is why we're doing it. It's really because we want to provide these experiences that help the students have real-world type experiences, they're group-oriented, they're project-based, and they're built around these tools that will allow them to explore STEM curriculum in a much different way than sort of experience or talking about the curriculum. Any questions about the STEAM initiative?
I'm really glad you have the professional development piece in there because I fear, I mean, you know, we have great teachers. We've had some of them for a long time, right? Or even 10 years is kind of a long time in this world. And how do you learn this stuff to teach it to kids without professional development?
And even if you're motivated, it's not efficient to just like stumble around with stuff, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a big element. And, you know, the other thing that I think we have to our advantage is when we put up a curriculum and say, this is K-12 and all kids will have the same experience, you know, because of the work Tim and Andrew have done, that will actually happen. That's pretty rare in school districts. You know, you'll get, oh, I want to use that, I want to use that, but.
Well, it's really obvious that technology has really changed in our schools. I mean, you think, you know, years ago, it was thought of more as a support. Now it's front and center in absolutely everything in a short period of time.
If you were to compare this technology plan to some others that you may have read four or five years ago, there's not a lot of sort of technical terms in there. It's not a lot about our networks because that's really, that's only a side thing to the real impact, which is really want to get it into the kids and teachers and changing instruction. You read a lot of that in the plan.
Well, thank you. I know it's late. Thanks for standing so long.
It's still 8:37.
It's taking you a real long time to watch your prime.
It's been a couple hours.
Couple hours. Thank you so much. Happy birthday. Good to see you. All right, thanks everybody. So we are back in new business and while we are in new business and I need a motion to adopt the.
External audit.
Yes, the external audit report. I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to accept the external audit report for 2014, 2015 fiscal year? The, I have the external audit report, the external, the extra classroom activities plans, and the management letter and response letter?
The same, the management letter and response.
It's moved.
Thanks.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor? Okay. And we are going up to 10.1, adoption of the 2016, 2017 board budget development materials. And I have a motion to adopt that.
So am I.
And can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Turn over to Greg.
Thank you, Robyn. Just before meeting the budget committee and discuss the budget committee charge, the guidelines and the calendar, these three documents, once approved by the board, will be on our website in the next few days. This really kicks off the budget season. It's kind of ending last year's with Dominic's report earlier and we're already starting the budget for 16, 17. The budget committee charge, one of their charges is to establish a budget calendar, approve the guidelines for budget development. Those guidelines are general in nature. They haven't changed a lot over time, but their overarching goals will say, without using the old definition of goals, since we're in the new mindset, thinking, mind growth mindset, I guess, a part of it is to have a broad look at where we're going as a district by providing long-range financial plans and communicating effectively with the public. So all those areas are covered in the charge and the guidelines really still focus on having a K-12 approach so that we don't think in silos, but actually try to include all students in our budget guidelines. Also is more mundane, but is to comply with all federal and state mandates. And one of the challenges, as you know, and continues, is the consideration of the tax levy cap. So that will continue to be a challenge, especially this next year. We also talked about that in the budget committee, that is close to zero for what the tax levy cap may be for budget development for 16, 17. And the budget calendar itself consisted of our typical meetings. We have five budget hearings proposed. These dates will be published, but our kickoff meeting really is budget hearing one on January 12th culminating on May 17th with a budget vote. And there'll be ample opportunity for public input, which the board encourages. And we're also looking at some expansion this year, a discussion about BOSI's services and costs. So we'll expand some of our discussions as they become appropriate during the budget development process.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, and as Greg said, May 17th, we'll be reminding the public about that often from here on out.
Well, we have a motion. We should vote on it.
Okay, so all in favor of adoption of the external, of, sorry.
10.1.
10.1, right. Adoption of the 2016, 2017 board budget development materials. Great, thank you very much. And that brings us to staff reports.
Yeah, I think it's been a long night to give my staff report. I will just focus on the letter. Sorry, I touched a screen. I have to, can't switch between devices. Talk about the letter, which you all asked me to draft at the last meeting and, yeah, that's all I did. At the last meeting. So I did, one is, you know, as per your recommendation, a letter to Regent Johnson and the five other regents who voted no on the new APPR resolutions. That's the friendly letter. And then there's a letter to the chancellor and the 11 regents, 10 or 11 regents, who voted in favor of it and passed it. I tried to, I mean, the letter probably reflects my style. I tried not to write the typical comprehensive, you know, two-page, every detail that we like and don't like about it, partly because I think it increases the chances that somebody might actually read it. My experience with everything we have sent, every resolution and every letter we have sent, is only the local legislators even acknowledge getting it. No one else even acknowledges getting it. Nevertheless, I think the point is a good one, and I think especially the idea of showing appreciation and support for the people who voted against it. You know, maybe they can build that coalition a little bit and something in the future. Brett?
My only question about it or suggestion has to do with who we're addressing the letters to. I like the letters, but are we going to copy anybody? You said the letter to Judith Johnson, it's going to the other regents that voted against?
That voted against, yes.
So are we going to address this letter individually to each region who voted against?
Yes.
Are we going to show CCs to?
CC the commissioner, the chancellor?
Well, that's the question. My real interest is to see the second letter to the chancellor. I would like it CC'd to all the regents and also to our local politicians and frankly to the governor.
That's funny. I thought I actually had something in here about, oh, to all of the ones who we are supporting, it says attached, you'll find a copy actually of the letter to the other, so they will be CC'd. They'll.
Oh, okay. Terrific.
And then, but we can also CC the governor on both letters.
But the governor, you know, it's.
And the commissioner.
We'll see if we ever get a response back from the governor, but I think it's really important to copy Latimer and Buckwheat. really important to copy Latimer and Buckwald on this so that they know what we're doing when...
Sure.
...this stuff. They're ultimately responsible for, you know, future votes.
No, I think that's unfortunate, but I think we gotta get our allies where we can get them.
Yeah, you know, you're putting the effort into the letter, it might as well go one miles out of it.
Yeah. All right.
When do we hope to get this out?
Probably get it out this week.
And could we send a copy, put a copy on the website and send a copy to Lisa Davis too, just as an FYI? Who knows, maybe some other district will like it and pick up on it.
And then it's gonna be signed by our Board. Right, right now, it's got your name on it.
Usually, that's a mistake. That's just because I wrote it, Janine thought it was from me. Normally, it would be signed by the President on behalf of the Board.
And I guess the only other thought was, do we want to just make it really clear in the negative letter that what we're looking for is a redo of the APPR based on research, based on input from local practitioners, without an overall reliance on testing?
Scott, what's the negative letter? Is that the negative vote or the letter?
The critical letter, the critical letter, bad you. Yeah, yeah. Because I think the letter that says thank you is short, sweet, perfect, says exactly what we need to say. I like the letter where we're criticizing in terms of it being very organized and the headings coming out, and hopefully, you know, people will take notice of that.
So, are we asking them to do something they can't do? They can't get rid of the legislation, the Regents?
No, but we're writing to the people that voted yes, right? So, to, so that, so it's almost like we've noticed that you voted yes.
You're paying attention.
And we're disappointed in that vote, given the lack of integrity of the system.
Yep.
Because that's sort of what's precipitating this now. Like, that's, meaning that it's just the right time.
That part, I think I said...
That's like the first sentence though, right?
...to still favor a change that I need to add, right?
Yes.
I mean, I think a reader would understand that we're disappointed and that we...
In the direction of, because this, well, the unanimous disappointment and direction taken by the Regents, but, but to really say very clearly that we're looking for a redo of the, you know, thirty twelve, not a tweak, but a total, you know, total redo of thirty twelve.
Well, really, a total redo of APPR, right?
Yes.
Because I think that probably goes beyond thirty twelve.
That's probably right.
I had a hard time figuring out what is...
I think of APPR is probably a better way to say it. And I think that when, I always like these letters when they say, we embrace accountability, we embrace high standards, but the current law is not achieving either of those, and therefore, what we're looking for is a redo that does.
Okay.
So, that, there's a, the last paragraph, the second sentence in the last paragraph talks about calling for the creation of a task force to develop a meaningful and responsible APPR system.
Yeah.
You want to tweak that and just make it stronger?
Make it stronger, yeah.
I pretty much took that from this, or...
So, so, we want to throw it out, the whole thing, barring that, you know, outcome at a minimum, the creation of the task force kind of thing? I mean, if we just say throw it out, I think there's a possibility that this, you know, task force thing may come about in some form. I mean, the Governor is doing it for back to common core.
Right.
So, maybe I should even drop what I say at the end about common core and just focus on redoing the APPR?
I think so.
Well, I was trying as much as possible to reflect, you know, the West Bud Letter.
Yeah, but I think that's dated now, that the Governors come out with this...
It's easier to just focus on one thing, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. So, do you want to wait to, two weeks? That's the question, or do you want me to just do it and send it?
Why, why wait?
Do you mean to have a see it again? Does anybody want to see it again, or can you email it?
Okay, email it.
Yeah, email if anybody has any problems, can come back and email.
Okay.
Sure.
And you let me know on different occasions.
Yeah. So, send around a copy and it would be a major problem with it if somebody write, we're not gonna tweak and WordSmith and stuff.
Well, it'll get harder at that point, because then I'll need to start doing multiple copies.
Yeah.
Redlines and everything.
And it's just, I don't think we should be doing business by email.
No, no.
That's true.
So, we'll see it, and if there's any issue, just let me know, and then we all just hold it off.
There's an issue, we just wait till...
Put it on the next agenda.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
So, when it's sent to you, actually, you want to send it to me, and I send it to everybody, and I'll put a due date to get any, you know, if you have any issues, so that we know if we have to pull it over to the next meeting, we'll be able to get it out.
Yep.
All right, that's it. Thank you. Okay, and that moves us on to Ben again.
I'll make my report very brief. See, this season, my brain is on overload, I don't know why, but it is. We'll speak about the transportation project, not the soil or the tank removal project, but the renovation project, which has been, we went out to bid at the end of the summer, and we had a bid that was unawardable. We repackaged it, rejected all those bids, went, went out, repackaged it, and broke out the replacement of the closet hub building as an ad hoc, and did some value engineering, changing some of the roof systems to make them less expensive, and some of the interior finishes, which would diminish from the scope of the project and the intent of it, but would reduce the costs. We opened those bids approximately two weeks ago. Right now, KG, I was hoping tonight there'd be ability to make a recommendation for a bid award, but the ad hoc ended up being higher than we have funding for, which is the closet hub replacement for the new bus wash station building. Walter Hauser for KGND is presently working with the apparent low bidder for this to see if we can reduce that cost further, and I'm hopeful that at our next meeting on October twentieth, that I'll have an awardable project that I can recommend to the Board. The issue will come down, as we've always known, to the funding of that new building because it wasn't originally part of the funding stream that we had envisioned for the renovation of this building. But we're getting closer, so I'm hopeful that we'll have a workable solution and a recommendation for a next meeting.
Great. Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. And Tim, you're good, right?
Twenty-four essential questions this evening. I'm exhausted. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
And if everybody can remain awake for a minute, just to report out a little bit on EAP, which is our Employee Assistance Program, and I think it complements what we were doing tonight with the essential questions about looking at the whole child. In Human Resources, we're interested in looking at the whole staff or faculty member and how we're best supporting them, and of course, we do that through professional development, and of course, we do that through our benefits. But EAP is a great opportunity, a very private opportunity to provide support to the adults who are working in our schools. It has an individual benefit, which is that individuals can call and speak with specialists. Some of the big areas that people can call about are elder care or anxiety, legal advice, and all of these are part of our contract with EAP and free to our employees to use. As an organization, we really benefit from them too in creating the whole employee, particularly for our staff in programs that we have for correct workplace behavior, sexual harassment, balancing home and work life. These are, these are things that are very integral and important to developing the adults here who are going to be well-established people for children. And every year, I meet with our EAP representative, and we go over the largest areas of usage in the district. This is, Byram Hills has been the top user of EAP out of all of their school districts that they use, which I think is a compliment to us, that our, our employees are resourceful and are seeking that, those helps.
That also means we're not wasting the money.
We're not wasting that money at all. And some of our highest areas, our highest use has been in elder care, in legal advice, particularly financial legal advice. The others were anxiety and stress. So, those happen to be our, our highest usage areas. So, we do definitely promote it. I send newsletters out every month as they come in, and I work with particularly directors to see how we can bring these programs. I just spoke to Cheryl today, and we're bringing a program within the next two weeks to the bus drivers, so.
So, some of these programs then are, like, a group presentation, and some of them are confidential, I assume?
Exactly, exactly. So, everybody's given EAP's number and can call EAP and ask, it could be a question about your own finances. They're really people who are not necessarily fixing all of these problems, but they're directing you to the people who can and to the people who can give you the resources you can afford, so.
Great. Any questions or comments? Thank you for bringing that to us. Good to know. And that brings us to board reports. I just have a quick report. I just want to say that the principal coffees have begun, and I went to the high school one today, and it was fascinating. Tim spoke about the STEAM initiative, the curriculum through K through twelve, so it was fascinating. And so, I, I recommend if any of the people on the Board can go to any of them for any of the schools, they're really a great way just to see what's happening at the schools and, you know, to the community as well, and you don't even have to have a child in that particular school. It's great if you have an eighth grader who's going to be going to the high school, come to the high school ones, see what to expect, and those dates are all on the calendar on the website. And just a reminder, board retreat, I believe we have a date, May seventeenth, I think, is the done deal?
Well, we're actually waiting for Ira and Mike.
November.
Did you?
No, I thought I did.
You did, Tim.
That it was okay?
Not May, it was, it was November, which, which is the winter way, I said May. And in the meantime, if anybody has any, any topics that you want us to consider, just pass them along to me. Okay? And moving to committee reports, board reports. Does anybody have a committee or board report? Mike, and then come to your question.
The Athletic Advisory Council met on, I believe it was twenty-eighth of September. Rob, we had about fifteen community members there. I thought it was really constructive. Rob led with this concept of an open door policy and the idea of getting feedback from the community on the athletic programs. He talked a little bit about the wrestling program and building that, but that there were, between coaches and assistant coaches, there was approximately twenty-five positions for coaching, which I just think it's a, you know, it's a big task, so.
A lot of work, yeah.
And he's working hard on it. And then I asked him the questions, what was his initial feedback, was being new to the district, and what did he see? And he mentioned that, you know, he was, his reception has been wonderful, he's enjoying it so far, staff's been great. He said the facilities, you know, need so, some support, and, you know, he didn't want to get granular, but, but he did mention that.
Our facilities were fine. Oh, I guess we'll be hearing about that, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Hey, Brett?
Yeah, I mentioned I attended the governance workshop last night, but I just wanted to say, following on your comment about the coffees, that one of the big messages that came out, sort of consensus among the participants last night, is that the power of a Board of Ed is miniscule, really, in the big scheme of things, but where we do have influence is in our own community, and the importance of being out in that community and communicating from the Board to the community, you know, what's going on kind of thing, and having a community presence is, is we can connect our community to the district, and we should continue to advocate. And part of that communication subject matter is the advocacy work that we're doing on behalf of the district and for the district's kids, but, you know, that's, that was one message. The other, we've got October nineteenth, twentieth, right, the business meeting coming up, which is the day of the next school board meeting. But I also wanted to make note of, you know, the new Secretary of Education is our own Dr. King, who, you know, while it's nice, while it's nice to say, gee, we know the Secretary of Education really well...
He's interim, right?
Well, it's, he's, you know...
Interim until the end of the...
You know, he's, he's, he's a little bit of a lame duck, but I'll tell you, it's disappointing to me that I know him to be somebody who's almost singularly focused on failing schools, charter school movement, and data gathering. I think that was why he was hired in New York State, and he took that approach to Washington, and he's gonna do really well as Secretary of Education on that, but he's gonna turn a deaf ear to all of the other burdens and everybody else liking Byram Hills' ass. I'm sorry to report that, I just want to make sure...
Better off there than here.
He's further away.
Yeah, you know, yeah, I guess that's right.
Congress is gonna limit his power, I would think, between now and, being two thousand and sixteen. But it's a shame that it's not going through Congress to at least get adjudicated by Congress and the American people, based on his record.
Yeah, but that is a really good point. If he were here, he'd be influential to us a whole lot longer than where he is now, and he'll...
And, or...
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else?
No, Policy Committee, Matt, and probably the next board meeting, you'll see, you'll see the results.
Quite a few first reads.
Right. Let's see. Okay, is there any topic for future agendas, request for information? Communications to the Board?
I just have one I said I would share. It's from North Castle Cares, and they are having a meeting on October twenty-fifth, or October twenty-first, rather, from ten to eleven-thirty, Bobcat Hall and the High School, and they asked me to extend it to all Board members. It is about mapping the community strategy for healthier and safer you. So, it's a great organization, our community. If anybody's interested, let me know, I can pass out the details to you.
Okay. And can I have a motion to approve our Board minutes from September twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Were there any changes?
I had one in there, and I don't have them called up right now, but in there, it said, you know, I talked about the growth model in the APPR system after Tim's giving us our district report card, and it said, you can't really improve much on the ninetieth percentile. It's really the ninety-eighth, or I think I said the high nineties percentile, but you can...
Change it to high nineties.
Yeah, high nineties. I think that was my comment.
No percent.
The other, the other thing I just wanted to make sure everybody was in agreement on, and it should be reflected in the minutes, is in the discussion about the voting at the business meeting, that even though we discussed the likely way each resolution would be voted based on what we know now, that the Board really hasn't, you know, there's sort of a general authorization to vote as I see fit.
Right.
You know, when the meeting is up. So, that should be reflected in there, because I made it clear at the meeting, and it should be in the minutes too.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, all in favor as amended? And Brett, did I hear you say, would the, you're going, you're gonna be here for our next meeting, which is October twenty?
Yeah.
It's the twenty-first, the next day, right?
And the business meeting is that morning.
Okay, so, but you think you'll be back?
I will.
Okay.
Yeah, the meeting is at like eight o'clock in the morning.
Okay, very good.
If I don't come back... Send the dog.
Scott, were you going to that as well?
Well, I think the business meeting, probably not, but the, some of the other parts of the conference.
Okay. All right, great.
You're, you're welcome to come in, but there's a visitor's gallery, so you can attend.
I see, but you can't be on the floor.
Can't be on the floor.
Okay, all right. And as I said, we went into executive session before the meeting, three-point-one, legal matter, individual student, three-point-two, legal matter, individual student. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Jeez.
Good night, thank you for watching, everybody.
Eight thirty-seven, did well.
Wow.